They will share a presentation of the final three maps for consideration. We will discuss next steps and hear from community members who have signed up to give public testimony. A reminder to everyone that this hearing is currently live on YouTube and Facebook and is also live and being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus's Government Television Channel Three. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. I want to recognize my colleague, Council President Harden. Councilmember Dorans, I believe, is on via WebEx. And so, thank you and welcome to all of our presenters here from the Council Residential District and Commission. Tonight, we have Nia Walters, the Legal Counsel and Analyst for Columbus City Council, as well as the CRDC Staff Lead, Chair Malik Moore, Commissioner Monica Sarzuela, Commissioner Avery Frost, and Commissioner Jeff Cabot. In May of 2018, Columbus voters approved Issue Three with seventy-six point oh six percent of votes in favor of this charter amendment. The charter amendment included council expanding from seven to nine members and a districting plan to take effect for the 2023 municipal election. At the core of this change, this will make Columbus City Council more representative of city population with a larger council and the requirement of residency per district. The charter amendment required a five-member independent citizen-led commission to be created to draft districting maps. With this, the Council Residential District and Commission applications were released in December of 2020. Commissioners Malik Moore, Monica Sarzuela, Avery Frost, Jeff Cabot, and David Poehl were selected in February of 2021 and began their weekly meetings in May. Chair Moore will be sharing more about the community engagement efforts made by the CRDC, so I won't go into the details now, but to give a big picture, this commission, in the course of nine months, has held twenty-five-plus public meetings, not including area commission or civic engagement meetings attended by commissioners. We've even had a couple of snack and learns, one on the South Side and the other at Cosi, more centrally located. They also received thousands of survey responses and public comments throughout the process. I, along with my colleagues from Columbus City Council and the commissioners, were all determined to make the 2021 districting process as transparent and open as possible and to follow the charter. I believe we have accomplished our goals. Before turning it over to Nia Walters and the CRDC, I want to lay out the next steps in this process. Tonight, Columbus City Council and the public will hear one final presentation on the three maps before us. Friday, December tenth, at eight AM, the public comment tool that can be found at www.columbus.gov/districtingcommission will close. I recommend folks who want to submit final thoughts and comments do so tomorrow, Thursday, December ninth. Monday, December thirteenth, at noon, the Council Residential District and Commission will host a special meeting to approve the maps and submit these and public comments to Columbus City Council. During the regular council meeting at the evening of Monday, December thirteenth, Columbus City Council will review the maps and call for a vote to approve one map. As a reminder, the 2023 municipal election will be the first election for Columbus City Council with the new districts and candidate criteria. Nine council members will be seated in January of 2024, and at that time, five members will be starting their four-year term. The other four members will start a two-year term. A determination of who receives which term will be made at the first council meeting of 2024, where the clerk will have the members-selected lots to determine which term they receive. With the introduction of a nine-district map in 2023, the residents of Columbus will see new representation and a new process. My hope is that even though this mapping process is coming to an end, the community will continue to stay engaged with Columbus City Council as we prepare for the changes, greater representation, and the exciting possibilities. Before I turn the floor over to our presenters, Council President Harden, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair Reamie, and thank you to the Residential Districting Commission members for the hard work and time put into this process. Regardless of how you feel about either a certain map, or even if we should be moving to a different type of model, I think that every, all of our residents can respect the process that we've gone through. It has been open. It has been transparent. There have been many opportunities for folks to engage, and for that, I am grateful. And so, I look forward to these last final steps in this process. And again, just give my appreciation to Chair Reamie for his leadership and to the commission for their countless hours of hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Without further ado, I will turn the floor over to Nia Walters and the Council Residential District and Commission members in attendance to begin their presentation. Nia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Reamie. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, commissioners and council members. So today, I'm going to talk briefly about how we got to this process and kind of where we're at and the districting requirements and more technical aspects of this process. So going to how did we get here? In 2018, Columbus voters voted overwhelmingly in support of Issue Three in the May 2018 election, with seventy-six point zero six percent of the vote being in favor of adding two additional seats to Columbus City Council, as well as dividing the city into nine residential districts. The charter required a five-member independent citizen-led commission be seated as the architects of this new, of these new district maps, and the charter provided specific requirements. So this is something that the community asked for. They wanted to see more representation within their respective neighborhoods and communities, and so this process ensued to help create a more representative community. So getting into the requirements, there were seven distinct requirements set forth in Section Seven dash two of the Columbus City Charter. The first would be that the maps comply with the applicable federal, state, and local laws. And so specifically, we're looking at the Voting Rights Act, which is a often referred to section of law when it comes to districting, because you look at the different factors you can consider when districting. Specifically, Sections Two and Five talk about race and how it can be considered as a factor but cannot be a determining factor when you are creating districts. Second, the districts must be equally roughly the same size in population, with the smallest district not exceeding the population of the largest district by more than one percent. I would say this was probably our toughest requirement, because one percent is very small. In the, in the 2010 census, Columbus sat at around seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-and-thirty-three people. In these ten years, with the 2020 census data, Columbus has grown with over one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand people for a total of nine-hundred-and-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight people. So that's roughly one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand people. And so when you break that down, each district should be roughly one-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine people. And when you look at one percent of that, that gets you to roughly one-thousand-and-six people. So that means each district has a plus-five-oh-three or minus-five-oh-three range that they have to be within each district. And so I thought that this was important to highlight, because I know that there were some difficult decisions that you've seen the commission go, go through and make during this process, so it's important to understand they were given a very tight requirement in terms of how they are able to create the districts. Thirdly, all of the districts must be geographically contiguous, which means they must share a border with each other, with each district. So that means they all share a border. So at any point in time where there was a certain part of the city that didn't touch another part, it had to be connected to the district that was closest to it, because all districts had to share a border with another district. The next one of that, the district should encourage geographic compactness. That means no cracking and no packing, also known as gerrymandering. And so that would be really important to talk about gerrymandering a little bit, just because you want to make sure that you're not separating different areas or connecting certain areas by disparate low-density corridors to create, to create a connection that is not a natural connection. To that extent, district boundaries have to be drawn to maintain the geographic integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So that takes into account your area commissions and civic associations and how those play a role in what community members consider to be home and consider to be their community. The next requirement is that they draw district boundaries utilizing existing boundaries, such as election precincts and natural geographic boundaries, such as roads and waterways. Last but not least, the district should not be drawn for the overpurpose of favoring or disfavoring any political group. So this concludes all of the different requirements as it relates to the districting requirements. And so what does this really mean for 2023 and what does this mean for communities? So in 2023, council will start completely anew with nine seats being brought up for election. That means it will be a complete revamp of the existing, the existing landscape. And so that means that each candidate that wishes to run for their district must reside within their district by March of 2022. Each candidate has to collect two-hundred-and-fifty signatures from their district, and they must turn them into the Franklin County Board of Elections by ninety days before the primary election. If there are two or more candidates, there is no primary required. If there are three or more candidates, there is a primary election that must be held to see who rises to the top two of those candidates and then will be proceeding to the general election. So like I said, those who receive the greatest number of votes in a primary election are moving forward to the general election. It's important to note also that the elections for these districts are still at-large elections, meaning at both the primary and at the general election, all community members will vote on all of the districts at each level. So that's an important thing to note. I am going to talk a little bit about how each map complies with these charter requirements. And so with that, we'll talk a little bit about Map A and a little bit about Map B and Map C in that regard. And so all of the, all of the maps comply with their local, state, and federal laws. Each map has complied with the one percent. For Map A, the largest district is District G at one-hundred-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven people, and the smallest district is District H with one-hundred-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight people. In Map B, the largest district is District B at one-hundred-one-thousand-seventy-nine people, and the smallest district is District H with one-hundred-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine people. And last but not least, Map C, the largest district is District A with one-hundred-one-thousand-fifty-four people, and the smallest district is District D with one-hundred-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety people. According to our ESRI software that we utilize to draft the maps, all of the maps maintain the contiguity requirements, and for the last couple of requirements, to the extent practical, all of them do not crack or pack. They also respect the geographic integrity of communities of interest, including your neighborhoods and your area commissions and civic associations, and they are drawn with the election precincts in mind, as well as the natural roadways and waterways, including highways and things of that nature. And last but not least, the maps all comply with the requirement not to favorly, favor or disfavor any political group overtly. So how did we get to these final maps? A number of ways. We utilized our One Columbus survey responses, which Commission Chair Moore will get into a little bit more about those responses. All three maps were utilized public comment periods for thirty days each time. We looked at the area commission boundaries and the Columbus communities' boundaries outlined by the Department of Development. We looked at the voting precinct boundaries, the 2020 population census data, as well as a goal to keep areas as compact as possible. With that, that concludes my presentation. Chair Moore, I pass it over to you.
Thank you, Nia, for all your help throughout this process. I want to thank Council President Harden, Councilmember Reamie, Councilmember Dorans, who's available or present on WebEx. Thank you all for giving us the space as a commission to move this work forward. We think it's going to have a great positive impact on our city. Thank you. The Council Residential District and Commission partook in a robust public engagement process. We did this using several mechanisms, and we started our work in May. And the work we've done continues till today, throughout today, and the end of this year. And the way we started, the first thing we did, we hosted two educational sessions, which gave us a primer on some of the topics that we felt would be important for the public to understand, and we also became better educated in that process. Second, we hosted four regional specific, or four region-specific meetings, and these meetings were held in each quadrant of the city, and they helped us to get a better understanding of what residents were feeling and what they felt were the key factors in creating the maps that we have here today. Additionally, we hosted two targeted meetings, which focused on our most vulnerable residents and our New American community as well. Third, what we did was we deployed the One Columbus survey with the help of the firm Murphy-Epsom, and that survey included questions about community vision, residential demographics, and what it was that community members viewed as being important factors that we needed to consider in this districting process. The One Columbus survey received over two-thousand-three-hundred responses. That survey was open from May twenty-sixth through July sixteenth of this year, and again, over two-thousand-and-three-hundred responses. Lastly, what we did for each round of the draft maps, we were able to utilize the, the public comment tool to collect the feedback we heard from residents. And then, so in total, between all three of the public comment periods that were open, we have received over five-hundred comments, and these comments helped us to shape our work and direct us. The public comment tool's still open for the final round of maps. All of these public engagement tools collectively helped us, they helped to guide and shape our commission's work. They helped us to create the final three maps that we'll be able to share with you shortly, and it's been a long and rewarding process. We could not have done this without the involvement of our community members, our neighbors, and, and as wide and diverse as Columbus is, is as wide and diverse as the comments we heard. And so without any further ado, I'd like to turn the floor over to Commissioner Sarzuela, who's going to share Map A with us this evening. Commissioner Sarzuela.
All right. Thank you, Chair Moore. Good evening, Council President Harden, Chair Reamie, Councilmember Dorans, members of the public who are tuning in tonight. I have the pleasure of presenting Map A for tonight's public hearing. My comments tonight regarding Map A, I will say, are going to be brief. You should be able to see it on the screen here shortly. This map that is out for the final public comment review is only a slightly edited map from the second round of draft maps that we released on October seventh. So what you see before you is Map A, and it's what we describe as the North-South map. These districts are organized from north to south, taking into account area commission boundaries and Columbus community boundary lines. When we first released this map back in October, this map overall had the most, we'd say, positive comments regarding the district boundaries. So we, again, thanked the, the public for, for submitting comments during that time. And so when we came around to the kind of final iteration of the maps, we opted not to make substantial changes to Map A. I do want to call out, we did, however, make a small tweak around the Graceland-Clintville areas as compared to the map released in Round Two. And at this time, currently, Map A has received forty-seven public comments via the online tool. And are there any specific questions to Map A that we might be able to answer at this time?
Yes, Commissioner, could you talk a little bit how this map was created, you know, by the team or, you know, like, the, the workaround, the work through on this particular map?
Sure. So Map A was kind of our, our first map that we had played around with once we were able to have the 2020 data uploaded into the ESRI software. And as we were all kind of trying to navigate that process, this was, I would say, the very collaborative effort that came up with this first Map A. Again, it, I think it took us a while to get to, to Map A during the second round, and again, we were proud of the work that we accomplished, but I would say that it is a very collaborative map.
And could you talk a little bit about the differences geographically, like, you know, size-wise, and why that comes to be? I'd just like the public to hear that. I know we've covered it before, but certainly wanted to share, you know, why some in the South look so much bigger than the ones in the North.
Yes. Chair Reamie, can you clarify, are you talking about the square, like, square mileage of each district?
Yeah, geographically, like, this, this sheer size of them, you know, some look slender and I...
Sure. I think one of the things I can speak to, you know, personally, is that Columbus varies as far as density, as far as where individuals live. So naturally, there are certain parts of the city that are more dense than others. We've realized, you know, the southern part of the city, South Columbus, is not as dense. And, you know, some of the feedback that we received said, oh, there's no way, why is that, you know, district so much larger than the others? The reality is, if you look at the population, there are just parts of the city that are not as populated versus other parts of the city that are more densely populated, for example, Northland. So while individuals may look at this map and say, oh, my goodness, there are some districts that are larger than others, again, the criteria of population was our driving factor, and so we adhered by those standards when creating these maps.
Could you talk a little bit about, like, some of the nuances of creating the boundaries? Like, what, you know, the challenges that you faced and some of the considerations you might have had when you created those boundaries on this map or any of them, for that matter?
I will let my other commissioners chime in.
Good evening. Yes, so one of the big things, as Nia mentioned in her presentation, is the requirement for population. And so a thousand-six people is not a lot of people. And we're talking about plus-minus five-hundred, it really came down to individuals and census tracts and election precincts. And so there will be some times where it may not have made sense to people who, who are most familiar on the ground, but we didn't really have many choices. Like, we would get it to the way we wanted it to, and then we'd be off by, like, five-thousand people. And so we would have to make choices to get it in line with the requirements of the charter.
I just think that that's, if you don't mind, I think that's a really important point for all of us as policymakers of the city to, to really zero in on as we go after this first process, that if folks don't see the continuity or the, the lines that they may expect, that under the charter that we're working with, that, that, that narrow of a, a confine seemed to be a real challenge. But I just think that, that we just got to really focus on that as we move forward as a, as a point of conversation.
Are you aware, I mean, I, I don't expect you to have memorized the, the feedback on, on this, but from a positive-negative standpoint, do you know, obviously, we've gotten copies of it, but are there some points that you could point out? What was positive, what was negative?
Council President Harden, Chair Reamie, again, this map during the second round, and I would say during this final round as well, of the forty-seven public comments that we received, again, we, we have seen a lot of positive comments regarding this map. I guess we'll call out, there is a kind of theme of comments about how the West Side could be divided, per se. There are thoughts that the communities outside of the two-seventy belts versus the communities on the West Side inside the two-seventy belt are, are different, the needs are different, which is, again, a valid, in some cases, a point to make. I will say that we considered all those comments, you know, with, you know, great discussion, and I do believe, you know, while this map may not address the concerns of the individuals that submitted such comments, we did take those into consideration on other maps. So that's something we, we try to keep in mind, because there is no perfect map that takes into consideration all of the comments that we received. Trust me, if we were able to do so, we would have put it out there. But again, it is kind of weighing each comment and, you know, trying to come up with the best solution possible.
I don't have any further comments, and I don't see my online, online colleagues either, so we'll...
Are there any additional comments for Map A from my fellow commissioners?
I will just share that if you look at the map, you see, one of the things that folks on the ground might not realize is the presence of either suburban communities or townships as we look at what contiguity means and making sure that each of the districts we created was continuously connected to another. That was another thing that factored in. And again, to Commissioner Sarzuela's point, this was the first map we made where we were working within those limits, and this is what we were able to produce.
Thank you. I, I am corrected and stand mistaken. Councilmember Dorans has a question. Councilmember Doran?
Thank you, Chair Reamie. I wanted to sort of ask this on the outset. I think both you and Council President Harden sort of asked a bit of a holistic question at the start as we sort of get into the detail of the maps. So this isn't necessarily a Map A question for, for folks here, but I did want to ask as, as we sort of dig into these. I know we've talked a lot about that hard requirement of that one percent population difference, and certainly as well as, as Chair Moore just mentioned, for the, you know, contiguous nature of, of the districts themselves. Just wanted to know if the commissioners had comments on sort of how they balance the other requirements of the charter, certainly thinking about neighborhoods and area commission lines and those kinds of things. You know, as Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee, I've been out at a number of commissions over the past few months, and certainly have heard a lot of feedback about how some maps included the entire commission within a map, and then certainly some others that, that had those commission boundaries divided up. And I think as we've all talked about, this is very difficult work to do considering some of the constraints that were there. But there are some, you know, calls out within the charter in which that are, are not hard requirements. So just wanted to know if commissioners had some philosophies around how they balanced those other things that were less, you know, sort of hard requirements and more sort of philosophical and how they sort of approached sort of mapmaking in general. So again, not necessarily a Map A question, just sort of in general, just wanted to have the opportunity to ask that.
I'll take that, and good evening, Councilmember Dorans. So I think one thing to keep in mind is, whenever we started a fresh map, I think we all tried to start with an area commissions and the Columbus communities in mind, generally speaking. But there's no way with contiguity that you can place them in nine equal districts based on a thousand people criteria. And so we had to start, you know, making some different choices. And so some of them, some of the maps, or one of the maps may stay true to the commissions as best as possible, but there are, what, twenty-one area commissions and three architectural districts that we were looking at? So that's twenty-four, and there was no way, you can't divide twenty-four by nine and get a round number. So that was the first thing, not to be funny, but to be, be real. And then secondly, we didn't really, we never looked at race or political party as a criteria in the making of these maps. We never even put a layer on the map as far as political, like, decisions in elections whatsoever, that never came up. And then racially, we could see the breakdown, but we never even really looked at it until after, and I don't even know, we never looked at it as a criteria for making cuts when we're looking at it. We could see the breakdown of the demographics based on ESRI software, but we never used it as a, as a decision-making tool.
If I could add to that, Councilmember Dorans, we did have several candid conversations around the impact of the presence of highways, what Columbus was like prior to the highways, and we, we kind of considered and asked ourselves the hard question, are we, are we contributing to an existing problem that has divided communities by race to use lines of division here and there? Or are we going, have we created lines that will allow for a connected community and not do further harm, like we know historically the highways have done? So we did indeed have those conversations to, to try to decide how we could connect communities and not do additional harm.
Thank you, Chair Moore, and certainly thank you, Commissioner Frost. I think, you know, that, that's that tension between sort of existing neighborhood boundaries because of decisions that have been made, you know, decades and decades ago, and how people perceive those today versus whether or not those were, you know, good decisions that have been made then and how they, you know, interact today. So just appreciate, again, I think the transparency as well as, as Chair Reamie mentioned earlier, all of these sort of discussions, and I certainly tuned into a few of the hearings that, that you all had in which, you know, you're in public, it is online, it is, people are able to be there in person, having that very tough discussion about, you know, where should this line be and, and why and how it comports... it comports to the charter or doesn't. So just, again, want to thank you all for your service. This was a monumental task, and just appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorance. I'll let you guys move on to the next map.
All right. If there are no further comments from my fellow commissioners, I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Cabot to present on Map B.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarah Zuelo. Map B. Map B, it's an edited version from round two. The differences from round two to this final round include reuniting Salem Village, creating a central district to combat spreading districts across the entire city from west to east, specifically in response to public comments on this charge, and taking a closer look at the Berwick and Eastmore neighborhoods to ensure that those community boundaries are taken into consideration along the Livingston Avenue corridor. This was kind of a east-west map as it developed. And, and I think in all of our maps and all of our starting points, we tried to look at the 41 identified neighborhoods, identified by the City Department of Neighborhoods, and tried to keep those as intact as we could. We quickly failed in that task. The City of Columbus itself looks like a gerrymandered map with all of the Swiss cheese holes of suburban municipalities and townships and tentacles going out in all directions. So it was quite a challenge. At this time, Map B has received 47 public comments on the online tool, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions anybody has about Map B.
In this, in this particular one, in Map B, again, can you talk about how this was created originally and, and, you know, by whom? Was it a team effort, that sort of thing?
So, so we started, this process started with us all using one computer at one time, and my wife will tell you that I can't be, I can't have two people using one computer. So we, we complained loudly, and the council thankfully granted us each with an Esri license so we could do work on our own time and bring that to the, to our working sessions. I believe Map B was originally created by Commissioner Frost, who brought it to us, and then we all worked on it collaboratively and collectively to fine tune it and get the parameters within the 1% population. Again, if anybody is looking for ways to improve this process, I would point out that the state House legislative districts, of which there are 99, are each approximately 100,000 people, and they have a plus minus 5% in that drawing process. We were held to 1%. And again, with a, with a base map that's not as connected as the State of Ohio is, but disconnected as the City of Columbus has grown over the years. So it was quite a challenge.
Would you say, this is a question for all of you, I mean, again, we've talked about this 1% limitation, would you say that was the greatest impediment to drawing these things overall?
Absolutely.
I wouldn't call it an impediment, but it was definitely one of the boundaries that, that contained our ideas. We had many ideas, but with, with keeping with that, it, it contained us.
Yep. All right. Thank you for that. And any comments on the positive and negative, excuse me, this thing gets a little crazy, but any comments on the feedback that, that's been received so far?
I have not, I have not tallied the positives and negatives on Map B, but I think it's probably about equal.
Okay. Fair enough.
I would also say that Map B preceded what we see to be Map C, and it led us into conversations as we were challenged with that 1% limitation. And to Commissioner Cabot's earlier point, failing at keeping neighborhoods together, it led us to, to intentionally begin to create a map that kept area commissions together. So in this map, you might see the blending of some of our communities in an effort to maintain contiguity and the 1% limitation. But again, we, we needed to make three maps, and, and so some of the learnings from this map led us to the, the next map.
Okay.
Which Commissioner Frost is about to present.
And let's see here. I think that's all I've got right this moment, so we'll just move on to the, the Map C.
All right. So for Map C, this, as we mentioned previously, is a new map. So this map came out as a result of the work and the comments that we heard after round two. And we wanted to, and this actually replaced the Map C that was out in the community for public comments originally. And so the question probably is, why did we decide to create a new map versus go edit the existing Map C? And there were a number of comments on the first three or first four maps technically, about how we should do a map that keeps the area commissions wholly together as best as possible. So this map was created with that in mind. Of the 21 area commissions and three architectural review commissions, which is 24 total, Map A kept 17 intact, Map B kept eight intact, and the old Map C kept 10 intact. Our commission agreed to replace Map C with a new area commission-centric map, and this map kept 20 of those 24 commissions or districts intact, with minimal splits to three of the commissions. And the only one that saw a major, I guess, quote unquote, major split was the Southside Area Commission, where about one-third went into one district and two-thirds went into another by area, not necessarily by population. And so that was the major, most major difference or distinction there. And at this time, Map C has received 72 public comments on the online tool. It probably has received more just because it's a newer map and people, that was their first opportunity to comment on it. But are there any questions specifically for Map C that you would like, or we can answer for you today?
Yeah, I understand the, the one thing I've heard a lot about being from the north is that actually the, like, Northland Community Council's been divided up into four districts. So, you know, and, and obviously, that's an, you know, a consequence of the 1%. So I was going to ask on this one, who created this one? And, you know, like, how did that come to be?
Yes, similarly to Map B, this was a result also of us having the access to the software. And the architect originally of this map was Commissioner Cabot. And then we took a collaborative approach to get it to the final stage as far as population and et cetera. I do want to just quickly note about Northland. Northland has 90,000 people. And because of contiguity, and especially because there's things north and east of it, there were times you see across the maps that we didn't have much choice to make, but to make a division to the community council. And so we did try to keep them intact as best as possible because we did hear a lot of comments from the Northland area as well. But I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we were thinking about it when we made those choices.
So, you know, Map A and Map C look pretty similar. Can you outline some of the differences between the two?
Well, I'll start, and I'll let my fellow commissioners jump in. So number one is the number of commissions that were kept intact. So, and that was one of the things, we were trying to provide some variety in the maps, but there's only been so many ways you can cut a nine-sliced pie with this kind of pie. And so that is the first thing I would say. Commissioners?
I think the other.
Turn your mic.
I think the other difference is the far west side. The, outside the outer belt section is pretty much kept intact in Map C, whereas it was split in Map A. And then I actually did tally the comments that we've received since Map C has been out, and of the 72 comments, 51 were positive and 21 were negative.
Okay. What, now, these are going to be a little bit more general, not specific to any one map. You know, again, outlining, since we've already talked about the 1%, what are, what were some of the other challenges that you faced, you know, through this process? Even, even before you maybe even started moving the maps around or creating the maps, obviously, census data was one and the release, the late release of that. But, but I'll, I'll let you guys explain that from your perspective.
I would say the timing of the census data release compressed our time, where to make a map and, and to wait until it was done, it gave us a smaller window of time to work. The other thing, when I look at the maps, just, just how historically many of us look at Columbus neighborhoods, and we may not realize how close one area is to another. And, and sometimes we have these preconceived notions of who our neighbors are, and, and us looking at it the way we look at it, and we might know that there's a suburban community between an area, I'll use the Hilltop, for example, neighbored by Grandview, that would then allow a piece of Hilltop to also touch with the short north. In our heads, they're not two, two communities you would connect, but in, in our maps, we at times had to connect those areas to be loyal to the 1% variance. So those sorts of things were things that kind of presented challenges, is what we perceive to be neighboring communities.
If you could change one thing for 2031, what would it be?
I will say that the 1% threshold, if that could be even changed to 3%, that would be something to consider. Again, it just, at the end of the day, it put us in a situation where we had to, you know, cut into neighborhood streets. And I know that that's something we didn't intend or wanted to do during this process, but unfortunately, the threshold was, it, that, it just led us to that point.
I, I believe Commissioner Cabot touched on a, a learning, a learning earlier with the Esri software access. If, if we all had access earlier, I think that could have helped. I don't think it stifled our work, you know, but having it early would have helped maybe to get us all going a little quicker.
Since you brought it up, although I'll let you guys, if you, if somebody has a different one thing they'd change, certainly listen.
My only thing would be if there could be, in a hyper-extreme situations, an ability to extend the timeline. Because we did have a hyper-extreme situation with the census data. And so, but, and then, so we just had to compact it into a shorter period of time, whereas especially on a first go at it, I think we need, you need as much time as you can have.
We were worried about that, you know, from, from the beginning. I mean, we, we were somewhat fortunate it came out maybe a month earlier than what they expected, but, you know, I think everybody would have liked to see, you know, three full iterations of, you know, at least, you know, given, if you had the normal timeline. But since you brought up Esri, how would you rate it? How would you rate the software? And, and, you know, of course, by 2031, things could be a lot different, but software-wise, but I'd be curious to know, once you had your individual licenses, what you felt were, you know, did you feel like it was easy to use and, and that sort of thing?
GIS software is just hard to use if you don't have any experience with it whatsoever. So I think that maybe training or something like that for future commissioners before you get into the mapping process is helpful, because we probably bugged Naya, like, can you click that thing with the arrow and the thing? And then, wait, no, okay, not that arrow, the other arrow, because we have no idea what we're doing. But luckily, we had Naya to help us, to guide, especially in those first number of weeks, to get us through that process. Because I don't know that we would have gotten Map A as quickly as we did without, like, substantial help.
So I've been a little bit involved with the Ohio League of Women Voters and their efforts with the statewide redistricting stuff. And they had a public competition to draw maps for statewide. And there were three software options they could use, but Dave's redistricting software is perhaps the most robust, and it's free and available to anybody. I might take a look at that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to expound on what you just said. I think that that competition was genius, because we had a lot of folks who were trying to go through the public comment tool to give us perspective, but they couldn't play with a map themselves to see the constraints that we're working on. And so some of the things that they were commenting on, or if you could play with it, you might have a slightly different perspective, but also you might be able to provide us with more, not more helpful, differently helpful comments, where you could say, hey, I was playing with it, and I got to this district, and here's how. That would be really helpful. Because I know I used the Daves, while we were waiting for Esri, I was trying to play with the Daves myself to try to kind of get at some of the cuts that we could make. But I think that that could be a cool way to do public comment in the next round.
How was the community engagement helpful to you, you know, and especially about thinking about how neighborhoods or communities should be grouped?
I think that, that was an essential piece of what we did, being able to be present in front of our neighbors and, and help them to understand better what, what the expectations of our work might need to be as compared to what they thought it was. There were some community meetings where we heard about trash removal or snow plowing, and, and just having the space to listen to those folks and remind them, our charter work is X, Y, and Z. But also, just having that opportunity to learn intimately the challenges that each of the communities had. I think each of the commissioners might be able to quote people from each of the regions that spoke and told us what their concerns were. And, and I think that was essential. Before we took any action, just intentionally making space to listen, be present with neighbors, and help them to just understand that even if it wasn't our charter work, what they were feeling and experiencing still mattered. That was an amazing experience, great opportunity.
I would like to welcome President Protim Elizabeth Brown, who's on, and I believe that she has a question at this time. President Protim Brown?
Thank you, Chair Rimi, and thank you to the commission. And I'm, I'm sorry to join you virtually instead of in chambers. I really appreciate the hard work. And on that question, I, I think that's a really important piece here that you engaged in the public comment that sort of allowed the, that allowed the, that just like further information, I guess, qualitative information that can't be captured by, you know, percentage numbers. And I'm curious, in looking back on that process, someone asked a forward-thinking question a moment ago about 2031, I think Chair Rimi did, and what else could we do, because a decade from now, I don't think many residents will even remember much about their engagement in this year's process. What, what more can we do to educate member, members of the public about the, the purpose of these districts and the kind of feedback that's helpful to the actual map drawing? You know, you just, you just said there was some feedback that was just kind of residents expressing where they stand on services needed in the city, which is crucial, but not germane always to map drawing. How can we help educate residents on what we want to hear that will really enable your process to, to draw the most unified and common sense maps?
I, I think we heard earlier from Commissioner Frost, a brilliant idea of allowing folks, I think it was Commissioner Cabot as well, allowing folks to kind of have an opportunity to put this puzzle together. I, I think if, if, if folks could look at the parameters we've worked within and try themselves to create a, a map with nine districts, I think there'd be a level of engagement and empathy that's a little different. I think that could go a long way. I also think that as now we will have a city with nine distinct districts, we have an opportunity to challenge folks, you know, to be the best district or, or to represent their districts. I, I think this structure will give us a lot of opportunity to engage differently as a, the city as large as we will be in 10 years. These districts might be a great vantage point to approach community members.
Thank you.
This next question I'm going to throw over to Naya, because I think she, with her expertise as an attorney and understanding the laws as they relate to fair, for election laws, et cetera, we've seen a lot of comments. laws, et cetera, we've seen a lot of comments about gerrymandering. And so I wanted to ask you to speak to what gerrymandering is and address some of those concerns.
Thank you Chair Rimi. So gerrymandering is like the idea that you are cracking or packing certain populations to kind of diminish or give a larger opportunity for a voice to be heard. And I heard those comments a lot throughout this process about, you know, it's no possible way that, you know, these districts aren't gerrymandered. So kind of to what the commissioners started off saying is that we have these different areas of the city that have township areas. There's also other municipalities like Bexley and Whitehall that are all kind of within Columbus, because Columbus is kind of, there's cities that are inside of Columbus boundaries to some degree. And so with that, it's important to note that these districts only apply to the city of Columbus, so we don't have any authority over other municipalities or townships. We are only solely responsible for the things that are incorporated in Columbus corporate boundaries. With that, in this process, because you will all still be voting at the primary and general election in an at-large manner, and when I say at-large, I mean that each community member is one person, one vote. So that means that you will vote on not only your district, but the other nine districts as you go through both sets of elections. So with that, it's not really possible for these districts to be gerrymandered, because everyone's vote carries the same weight. Nobody's vote is different than anyone else's vote. And so it's important to note that, you know, these districts, because we are at-large elections still for at both the primary and general elections, one person, one vote, so everyone's vote holds the same amount of weight, and everyone will vote for each district going forward.
Chair Rimi, may I have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Thank you, Nia, for that. And actually, my follow-up is to the commission members again about public comments. Did you feel like people understood this purpose of the districts very well, you know, what Nia is explaining as an answer in part to the ways in which this can't be a real gerrymander, because 100% of people are still voting across the city? I have found it's hard to explain that distinction to people. Did you find in the public comment when people were showing up to express their opinions or ask their questions of you all, that the kind of change that is about to occur, which is not a traditional district structure, did you find that that was pretty clear to people? Or there was still a lot of gray area?
I thank you, Councilmember Brown. I believe that that was an area that people didn't understand clearly. I couldn't tell from the volume of comments if it was the same small group of people sharing the same comment over, but gerrymandering was brought up several times, and sadly, it wasn't in a space where we had the ability to further educate or dialogue about what gerrymandering would be. But there were several people, as they looked at the maps, again, my assumption is they weren't aware that the white space that you see on our maps is adjacent townships and suburban communities, but the thin strips or the oddly shaped parts, I think at times people just by default thought that meant that it was gerrymandered. And I wished we had more opportunity to share with them why they might see the white space on maps and why it would not be considered gerrymandering because of the definition that Nia just shared with us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown, just to add to that, I would say when we, beginning in May, had our kind of public meetings in the different neighborhoods, we, I felt that we did have to kind of explain and level set, you know, what got us to this point and the system that will be created in 2023. I do feel like that there is further communication that can educate our voters on what this change means, and the fact that, you know, even though they will have a council member that resides in their district, that again, their vote, when they show up at Election Day in 2023, they will vote on every single district. So I think that there is still some work to be done to educate, you know, residents in the city of Columbus on what this new system, you know, will look like after we approve these maps.
Can I add one additional point to that? On top of that, I think it's also important to note that because you are still voting on all the districts, and even though you are divided into districts, council is still representative and still responsible to the entire election in the city of Columbus. So I think also continuing to stress that point, because I think people think like, oh, you know, if this, if my area commission is split in two districts, we have two people that we can go to versus people are like, oh, my area commission is wholly in a district, so we only have one, so it's unfair, like they have more representatives. But ultimately, all of the districts are still represented by the city of Columbus as a whole, so you can go to any member with any concern you have. Now granted, you know, a member that lives in your neighborhood knows where the streetlights are, they know where the potholes are, they know, you know, where the problem spots are, what parks are closing, what's happening on a day-to-day basis. And so I think this, the goal is to help make this more representative, so people know what's going on in their neighborhoods, and so that they know what's going on across the city. But if there is a council member that maybe knows a certain area better, you're still able to reach out to them and say, hey, I have this issue with the environment, or I have this issue with safety that I want to talk with you about, as well as the member that lives in your district. So I just also wanted to clarify that.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
And I know, you know, just going around speaking with area commissions and that sort of thing, you know, the comments would come up. And I said, you know, hey, Malik, if you and I live across the street from each other and you're in District One and I'm in District Two, the great thing is, is your city council member is mine and my city council member is yours. You have nine representatives that you can still contact and advocate for your issue and your community. It's just allowing people or requiring people to live in nine distinct parts of the city. And so, you know, I think that that's important. And, you know, talking a little bit about the townships, that's a really good point. And so when I was up in Northland, there was, as a Northland Community Council President, there were so many different Blendon Township, and of course Clinton Township's a big one that's close to my house. And, but yet, Clinton Township's also where Lennox is, and it's over by Grandview Heights. And so, you know, it's just, it's a township that has not any continuity between their two sides of the tracks. And in fact, if you look on Cook Road, and this is indicative of the annexation policies that we have, but it's what we consider sawtooth. And so there are individual houses along Cook Road that are in the city of Columbus, but their neighbor might be in Clinton Township, because that house chose to annex for city services, et cetera. So there, it's a kind of a complicated system, you know, when you get back really down to the granular level. But, you know, it also means that, that's why we stretch out to Polaris. So we have parts of the city of Columbus in Delaware County, for instance. A lot of people don't know that, and, you know, those people up there vote for judges in Delaware County and Franklin County. It's a strange circumstance. So I think we're, you know, I would like to acknowledge Laura Baker-Morris, who is the Chief Counsel for the City Attorney, Zach Klein's office. And also, you know, just allow you to say a couple of words. I know we've been involved and engaged throughout the process and going for advice, and also just to make sure that everything is in compliance with the Charter. And so I'll just give you a moment to say a couple of things.
Thank you, Councilmember Rimi. It's a pleasure to have been involved. Nia has done the lion's share of the work here. We've been available to answer any questions that might have come up along the way. And I'm excited to hear council have the opportunity to weigh in on the choices that the commission will be presenting to them on Monday. I'll be in the chair that night, so it should be a long night, but it's an exciting night for Columbus.
All right. I don't have any further questions. If anybody has any further comments, otherwise we'll move into the public speaking portion of the evening. This evening, we do have five speakers, I believe, who reached out to my office ahead of the public speaking hearing to give spoken testimony, as well as written testimony from the University District Area Commission, Northwest Civic, Far East Area Commission, Short North Civic, Clintonville Area Commission, and Italian Village Society. Thank you to everyone who was providing testimony tonight. We will begin with, I want to see if Charles Tompkins is online. He's not, okay. So we're going to move on. Janet Cahill from the Westland Area Commission, who should be on WebEx. Janet, are you there? If so, please state your name, the organization you're part of, and you would have three minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm here. I'm Janet Cahill. I'm representing the Westland Area Commission. Thank you, Councilmember Rimi, President Harden, and President Pro Tem Brown, and Councilmember Lawrence, they're on WebEx. I watched most of these sessions, and why these people didn't pull their hair out, I don't know, but they all seemed to look pretty good. It may not have been as bad as I thought. They were very diligent, and I was very impressed with the process and the attention that they gave to so many different factors and their deliberations. They actually struck gold on September 1st, right off, right out of the chute. And I was disappointed to see that that map wasn't in the initial three that were considered, but I was very excited to see it become Map C in the current three that you're evaluating and considering. Map A for the Westland area, which is west of 270, splits our commission area into two sections, into two different districts, and puts us with the Hilltop. Now, full disclosure, I was born and raised on the Hilltop, and lifelong Westside person, but I live a little bit further now, I'm on the other side of the Outer Belt. And the needs on the Hilltop are totally different from the needs in the Westland area on the other side of 270. So Map A is not our first choice and wouldn't provide us with a representation that we feel we need at city council. Map B has a similar problem in that it divides our southern part, puts our southern part of the Westland Commission into another district. And we don't really favor that either, but Map C is very good. Now, I think there was a mention about one of the lowest population areas on Map C being our area, and with that, and all the development that's going on now, that certainly will grow by the 2031 mark date, so it's good right now. The 72 comments, I did read through those, and the majority of those were favorable, and I think that the number increased because people were glad to see another alternative, not because it hadn't been there before. I did have a question about the voting, since we're all going to be voting for all of the districts, and then there would be two people to vote for that live in each district. That seems like it's going to be kind of tough to accomplish, but maybe you have a secret weapon in your bag of tools there or a method that you think that you can accomplish that with. All in all, we favor Map C. We look forward to having area council members again, like when I was a kid. Of course, back then, there was only north, south, east, and west, and there wasn't a freeway, so old people. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cahill. We appreciate the opportunity to hear from you this evening. Our next speaker is Reverend Bonnie Trout from the Far South Columbus Area Commission. Reverend Trout, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Just a reminder that, just state your name and the organization you're representing. You have three minutes. You have the floor.
My name is Reverend Bonnie A. Trout, and I am Chair-elect for 2022 for the Far South Columbus Area Commission. I'm also president of Three Rivers Civic Association and Block Watch. I do want to thank the CRDC for the many hours and also for coming to Marion Franklin Community Center. And I want to say that Nia explained it very well about the representation of the council members. Our commission area has been concerned about the businesses on South High Street and South Hamilton Road, and this Map C incorporates both of those for us, not only because of the crime, but we want to make sure that the businesses stay open and the community has places to shop that are close and not having to go out of town to Grove City, Grove Port, Canal Winchester, Ovets, Reynoldsburg, or Pickerington to do their shopping. I look forward to working with the Greater Southeast Area Commission, which is adjacent to us now in this Map C, to make the South Side a stronger community. We're like-minded communities, and I believe that will work out for us. Also, I would like to say that we look forward to keeping everything cohesive with the commissions or the districts that are adjacent to us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Reverend Trout. We appreciate your service and actually you coming in tonight to speak. Our next speaker is in person, Aaron Newman from the Far Northwest Civic. And so I welcome you to the podium to speak. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you all very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Aaron Newman, a member of the Far Northwest Coalition of Columbus, so I'm speaking today on my own behalf. Thanks to the commissioners for their service and diligence, and thanks to Ms. Walters for leading the tremendous process. Longtime follower of the working sessions on YouTube, so it's great to join you all in person and thank you all in person. Thanks to also Councilmember Rimi and your tremendous staff and our council liaison, Mr. Doverall, for keeping the Far Northwest informed and involved. The people of Columbus made districts a clear priority, and we're all looking forward to better representation downtown. It's been a tough assignment, and the commission has answered the call. Council districts will allow closer attention to and deeper understanding of local issues at city hall, though, and this is a note for council or maybe the voters rather than the commission, many still believe that even greater representation would be achieved by removing or somehow tempering the at-large nature of both primary and general district elections. But as to the great work of the commissions, just want a few notes to share. Map A keeps the Far Northwest Coalition area intact in District E, but I'd extend Commissioner there as well as notes out on like the western suburbs. We have some of that issue up north as well. We connect to like the eastern areas of the far north and Polaris neighborhoods, and though they look close on the map, we're actually separated by the Olentage River, Hyatt Banks Metro Park, State Route 315 and 270. Really, the district is not in practice contiguous. You really can't drive from one end to another without leaving and re-entering Columbus. Maps B and C, on the other hand, are nearly identical in the northwest, keeping the Far Northwest Coalition's area almost entirely intact, just a few, I think dozen neighborhoods, I'm sorry, houses, split off into a different district. And they combine the Far Northwest with the neighborhoods to the south in the Northwest Civic and neighborhoods around Tuttle Crossing and Hyde and Run. These areas are close together, they have similar circumstances and similar challenges, and I think they make for a cohesive, sensible district, as B and C are both representative of the northwest in general and Far Northwest in particular. With all else being equal, I'd prefer Map C, which better maintains the area commissions and civic associations, which form a great, great sense of community across the city. Thanks again for all of your time and attention, and we're looking forward to some exciting times ahead. Thanks again to the commissioners.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Appreciate your comments this evening. And finally, we have Jim Griffin, the South Side Area Commission. Used to be Chair, I'm not sure where you're at right now, but I think you're on WebEx, and certainly welcome your testimony. Jim, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
I sure can. Thank you very much. You have three minutes.
I was having some issues, technology issues. Yes, this is Jim Griffin. I am still currently Chair of the Columbus South Side Area Commission. We, as a commission, supported Map B, and we supported that map because it preserves our South Side communities represented by the area commission as a single district, and it ensures that the voice of the communities with less capacity or bandwidth and it ensures that the voices of the communities with less capacity or bandwidth with to advocate for themselves not be divided or diluted, and it respects the natural and organic neighborhood and community boundaries, and it ensures that the districts do not divide the South Side communities of interest. Primarily, we voted for Map B because it kept the Columbus South Side Area Commission intact for the most part, and so this is why we recommended, our recommendation was for Map B. And I want to thank the the Commission and council members for all the work that they put in this, and there are my comments.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate those comments. So I'm going to start to close. I just want to remind everybody that after the map is selected on the 13th, voters will still be represented in the 23, going into 24 election by the entirety of council. In other words, in the 2023 election, you will still be voting at-large for nine members of council. This new system only means you are guaranteed to have council members living in nine distinct areas of the city. The responsibility will still remain for someone on the north side to represent the west side, someone on the south side to represent the north side, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're all your representatives, and it just means that they'll be living in nine distinct geographic areas. Before we bring this hearing to a close, we have some people to thank, a lot of people to thank, actually, for this process. And first and foremost, I want to thank you to our community for your engagement and feedback for the first-ever Columbus districting process this year. We truly could not do this without your input and partnership. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our council, residential district and commissioners, Chair Moore, Chair Malik Moore, Monica Sarrazuela, Avery Frost, Jeff Cabot, and Dave Paul, for your volunteering to serve on this important commission. Your work's pretty much done. We're going to rope Chair Moore in to come in at least on Monday. Your service to this community is honorable, and I certainly, from the bottom of my heart, cannot thank you enough for stepping up to serve the city, the residents, the city of Columbus. I know I share the same sentiment as my colleagues. Thank you to Nia Walters, who took this challenge on head-on in late 2020 to put together a commission, run the entire process, interpret what the Charter said, you know, and with consultation with the the City Attorney's Office, and get council over this finish line with an improved map by the end of 2021. Thank you to my team, Jeffrey Carter and Lucy Frank, who did, you know, so much to assist myself, Nia, and the Commission throughout this process. And as always, thank you to our fantastic teams at CTV, the Department of Technology, for your assistance in getting these important public meetings out to the public. Mark Carter, who's sitting behind us, who is now on some serious overtime because of all the hearings we've had this week. Thank you to Laura Bacon Morris from the City Attorney's Office for all the legal guidance provided throughout this process, and a big thank you to the council communications team for their help and work in helping us engage with the community and get thousands of survey and public comment responses this year. Thank you to our council community engagement team for helping us engage with area commissions and area civic associations throughout the process. Thank you to Clerk Blevins and her team for all of the technical and legislative assistance provided throughout the year. And finally, thank you to my colleagues for entrusting me with leading the districting process for 2021. It has been a true pleasure to work on this important process, and I look forward to helping share whichever map is chosen next week with the community as we approach next steps. The public, just a reminder, the public comment tool is still open until Friday, December 10th, at 8:00 a.m., so please give your feedback on these maps if you haven't already done so. These comments have been shared with my council members weekly and will continue to be shared with them up until the decisions are made and the vote on the December 13th. You can visit www.columbus.gov/districtingcommission to find the public comment tool and review the maps. Thank you to everybody that joined us this evening. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and certainly to have a great night. This concludes this public hearing on the council residential districting commission.